All right, good evening everyone. My name is Dietrich Scanford. I'm the director of Clayton County Parks and Recreation. And I'm all myself, gentlemen, Taco, Driven, Lindsay Long. We're the staff members that will, as well as Mr. Lavender here to that, we're staff members that are here to help facilitate a public meeting regarding our initiative for the 2015 SPOS initiative. To give you a little background, what's happening, the board of commissioners along with the cities are looking at opportunities to review the one piece sales tax for the 2015 SPOS initiative. What will happen is, I guess, starting back in October, along with the cities and the county, we facilitated several public meetings throughout the county to give citizens an opportunity to give us feedback on what they would like to see as part of that SPOS initiative. In short, let me dispel a couple of this. The SPOS initiative has not been approved or voted by the board of commissioners. Again, this is an opportunity for the citizens to provide us input as to things you would like to see. Certainly through our media outlets and through some other citizen groups. There's been a lot of discussion about the respective projects that are out there. And again, the board is still massaging those respective projects, but they have not made any final decision as of yet as to what those projects will finally be. Tentatively right now, we will continue listening sessions probably through February. There will be a tentative or there will be a vote by the board of commissioners at some point in time acknowledging those programs. And then there will be a ballot initiative that is tentatively set for May for the citizens to then go forward and vote on those respective projects. So, that's kind of quick and dirty. We would also like to point out that you can get more information from our ClaytonSPOS.com website. It provides you a list of those tentative projects, not only the county products, but also the cities as well. You got to give you a sense of the flavor. But, again, if there are some respective projects you'd like to see from the cities, we're encouraging, please reach out to those respective municipalities. And they'll be glad to provide you more insight about what they are proposing regarding the SPOS initiative. So, with that, we want to spend more time listening and talking. The rules for this evening, we will ask that if you have not signed in, please sign in at the back that it gives us an opportunity to provide you with update on information as it becomes more readily available so that we can, again, keep you in the loop about the projects. Let me also give a disclaimer. The county is by no means using these opportunities to get you to vote yes or no. We cannot have a political position regarding a yes or no vote. However, we are in a position to try to educate you on some of the previous SPOS initiatives as well as answering the questions you may have regarding what we're proposing to do for the 2015. So, what I will do is by show of hands, you will have a two-minute time limit. You will call up to the microphone where you would provide your name, provide whatever you feel like is the commentary that you'd like to provide or editorial regarding the SPOS program. If it calls for a question and we can answer, we certainly try to do that. If ultimately we cannot, you certainly will get that question and try to follow up with you in a timely manner to make sure that your question is answered.
This money is all proposed. This is according to how sales tax work. So you really can't guarantee any projects that are going to be done, right?
Yes ma'am. I'll let Mr. Tako chime in as well. So, if there's a shortfall in the collection, the county can have several options. Whether that could be eliminating projects because you can have collections, you can find another funding source, i.e. the general fund, or some partnerships, or you can have a reduction in the scope of work. So, for instance, if we, I just talked from our recreation center. The recreation centers were proposing the '09 program, and we proposed an $8 million recreation center. But the collections will be short, we might scale that back to $6 million in order to ensure that we can still get some of the level or some level of the project completed, but maybe not at the level that we anticipated at the very beginning.
Well, I've been hearing about a civic center. That's about the only one I know about because I actually have been on the site for all of these other organs. But, can you kind of tell us what else is on that list of projects that may come about? What's being floated out there? Just so that we can discuss it here.
Yes ma'am.
I think this is the right form to do so.
Great. So, there are several projects that were mentioned. Everyone is hearing about the civic center being wanted. There's also a couple of county facilities or county buildings that were proposed. Let me get to how we got there. Through CEO's office and our board of commissioners' office, there was an opportunity for directors to submit a list outlining the needs of the respective departments. So you can imagine that list was a large list of projects. Mr. Tako, the Transportation Development provided a plethora of projects, whether it was roads and sidewalk projects, parks of recreation. In my department, we provided an event center that outlined some of the needs in parks of recreation as well as some of the preferred maintenance needs, capital, outline needs. Mr. Lavender outlined some projects within the IT department, including technology, some technology center and software that we need to ensure that we're providing better services to the citizens. And of course, our public safety reminds the gamut from vehicles to buildings to equipment. And so, the initial list was anywhere in the office of $445 million. For the total collection, we know that the program is not going to be that much. And so now, we're in a process of trying to provide a more synthesized list back to the board so that therefore they can get their arms around it. And then, of course, the commissioners, they will only have outlined projects they'd like to see as well. And so they're now just giving kind of the total list from the departments, and then they have an opportunity to massage this as well to at some point in time make a recommendation on what they think is the most appropriate in the state of the counties.
And the money has to be spent on something concrete. It can't go towards rents or towards salaries or anything like that. It has to be in concrete.
For the most part, the special purpose lookout for sales tax, it addresses a lot of the capital infrastructure in the counties. So, yes ma'am, you're right, it cannot go towards personnel costs. Now, let me clear that up. In some instances, in administration, administrative fees associated with facilitating the program, it is going to carry forth the labor associated with capitalization of the SPOS program, but it can be used to help carry out that program.
Was that written in what it voted for? Was it voted for highway repair?
I'm sorry, future question, sir?
SPOS, what was it written in voting for? Highway improvement?
The question was, was SPOS initially approved for highway improvement? It runs the gamut. It can be for highway improvements. For the most part, you see a lot of SPOS initiatives in the metro area throughout the state of Georgia. They do carry, they do take care of a lot of the capital needs that relates to roads and sidewalks. However, the ballot initiative is the one that really is the impetus behind determining what the citizens would like to see in the ballot initiative. So it could be recreation centers, it could be technology upgrades, it can be public safety, it can be fleet, it can be a multitude of things. But again, it has a common form of a ballot initiative from the commissioners to the citizens, and it takes the citizen to vote it affirmatively in order to move forward with it.
Let me add one thing to that. SPOS is capital. It's not operating, it's not maintenance, it's capital expense. So, it doesn't limit you in the state code on defining out everything it can be. It's on the county to kind of do a litmus test, is this a capital nature? So, it, characteristically, like Dietrich said, most of the time in metro Atlanta, you see a lot of heavy transportation, roads and bridges and that type of thing. But it doesn't have to be. The '04 program in the county was heavy on transportation. The '09 program was not as heavy. The county added several other buildings and facilities to meet the needs.
Well, I know coming down John Barrow, you can't hardly go straight without hitting a hole. We need work on the structure of these highways around Clayton County. Something, hey. And talking about putting up, what you're talking about, we don't need that. We, the center they're talking about putting up, we, we just don't need that now.
Yes, sir.
We've got too many inchable buildings in this county.
Okay, so I heard.
Yeah, you mean to tell me, I know you've been driving around Clayton County, that you, all the bumps and everything, like the gentleman said, all the messed up buildings and everything, you couldn't come up with just a civic center? You think that would solve all of these other problems that we had? How did you all come up with civic center anyway? It was a drawing in it or did everybody discuss it?
Okay, so I want to make sure I get the question. The question is, how did we come up with the civic center?
Yes.
Okay, so, again, directors were given the task of submitting a list of different capital projects that they thought would be beneficial for the board of commissioners to contemplate. The civic center was one of those projects. So you're asking a question about where are we on the two senior centers for the '09 SPOS? That's the question. Okay, good question. So, what's happening is, the board just came off a retreat. And what we've asked, and you try to figure out what regards towards prioritization of a lot of our '04 and '09 projects. What we're doing now is trying to develop a priority list as to those projects that what we call one thing improved. Projects that don't call for impact on the general fund. It's a matter that we've already implemented or contacted a product manager, and it seems like it didn't call for a lot of energy to get those projects started. Then that becomes a priority as it relates to prioritization of those projects. As you know, in some instances, some of those projects call for there to be support from the general fund. You're going to open up a senior center, you've got to have the money to run it. And so, now we need to kind of ensure that once we build it, we're not in a position of building a facility, and then ultimately, there's no money to operate it. So the board is trying to make those tough decisions about what seems to be the priorities. And that will be the kind of timeline as to how we push forth those projects for the '04 and the '09 projects that have not been completed.
The civic center is a revenue generator. It's something we don't want to put in. There's a lot of things that can be done. The plays, the basketball tournaments, I mean, the facilities can be ran year-round as a revenue generator for the county that can take care of itself. Now, we keep building these admin building, rec centers, we have to stop it. And that's where the problem lies with the inability to complete these projects. That's just from my position. So the civic center is a revenue generator for the county, which is, and I don't think you're going to have that in there.
Well, General, let's do this. I think what we're trying to do is, we want to make sure we capture a sense of what the citizens like to see. And I hear you loud and clear, the civic center is not something that you can support. And that's fine. I think the list is a list. It's not necessarily representative of what the board is going to go with. They have not made any final decisions one way or another. And what we want to do, if there's something that's not on the list, or what you heard is not on the list, we'd love to get that information so we can make sure it represents it. Yes ma'am?
Is there a particular person or is there a specific entity other than the county commissioner who oversees the funding of the SPOS to make sure that the money is used, what you say is going to be done, and not put somewhere else other than what you mandated for?
Okay, so I can make sure I understand your question. You want to ask, is there a point person that's responsible for managing up the SPOS? Is that basically the question? Okay. In previous SPOS initiatives, in the '04 to '09, for the most part, a lot of that responsibility lied at the county manager level and through our central services department. So, they were responsible for bidding out the respective projects. It might have taken the department heads to work in conjunction with our central services department to ensure that the projects were being carried out. But the overall management of that project and that program might have been styled with the county manager or previously our chief of staff office. Now that we have a chief operating officer, for the most part, she is responsible for ensuring that the oversight of that program is taken care of. However, there is a proposal on, to the board of commissioners, that they are looking at possibly having a SPOS manager or someone like, or an organization come forth and manage the overall project so that, one, there's an opportunity for you to see the status of those respective projects; two, how the funding is being allocated; and thirdly, to give you a realistic timeline as to the prioritization of those projects over the period or the life cycle of the SPOS initiative.
We had all this rain at Powell's Road. You push the left side of the road and I'll fix the upside.
I'll take that one. Are you talking about really recently?
Yeah.
Okay. Problem we have right now, we're in the middle of winter and we can't buy asphalt. These asphalt plants aren't making asphalt. So, we cannot buy asphalt because the asphalt plants are not making asphalt right now. It's a temperature-dependent situation. So as soon as the asphalt plant makes asphalt, we can come back out and finish Monday's Mill Road. And that's just patching the potholes right now. And it's on our list to be resurfaced next, in 2014, through the SPOS program. I think it's no secret all of the county development has stalled, specifically in the residential areas where we have half-built out subdivisions. The majority of theirs are still privately held by the developer. And until the developer chooses to come back in and restart development, unfortunately, we kind of have what we have right now. I know our Refuge Control Department and our Code Enforcement Department are trying to keep them as clean as possible given their manpower. But if there are locations where you're seeing potholes developed on those roads or any other roads, if you've called the Transportation Development Department or if you reach out to the board of commissioners' constituent aid, if we don't know about it, we can't repair it. We'll get on our list and work on a plan to get it repaired for it.
As far as sidewalks and roads. I don't know how many of you are familiar with Plent River Road. There are no sidewalks. Anytime of day or night, there are dozens of people walking the street. And it's unincorporated. So who do we get to fight that battle? Because if I live in Laurel or if I live in Jonesboro or if I live in Rivertown, I have officials I can go to to assist. If you live in unincorporated Clayton County, I hear nothing. And it's just a matter of time, if it hasn't happened already, that pedestrians have not been able to talk to them.
Plent River Road. There are sidewalks on the eastern portion and the western portion. The middle portion is kind of forgotten there.
Yes.
We have been working through the previous SPOS programs on a project with Georgia DRT to improve that section of road for probably eight to 10 years now. It is scheduled to go out the bid in about September, pending Georgia DRT approval, to improve that stretch of road, and it will have sidewalks on both sides of the street. And we are actually working with Commissioner Rooks about potentially getting streetlights in that area to. So the improvements that you are requesting, your pennies are already at work on those projects.
Is there any way that there can be clarity as to what is actually being done to expedite those programs? To get those programs implemented as we move forward to the 2015 SPOS? Because I truly believe that the chairman had a vision of hiring SPOS managers six, seven months ago that was voted down, but I think he saw the need to complete these projects before the public could get engaged with the 2015. So if there's some type of way we can get clarity on what those past projects want to do as we move forward to the 2015 SPOS, if there's any way possible, we can do that.
So, you're talking specifically about road projects or just the whole topic?
Typically, sidewalks, road projects, sidewalks, all of the frustration that you're having, and it needs to be addressed. Transportation, economic development, the whole plane, the spread.
In general, there's a lot of projects still left to be completed in the '09 program. The '09 program is not complete yet. All the funding hasn't been completed. The funding is set to expire at the end of this year, so there's about four more months of collections needed.
But see, that's what needs to be clear. And I think that's where a lot of the frustration has come in and played here. Okay, the funding is not in place to complete those projects. People are unaware of these things. So, this is the information, I think, that would quiet some of the storm as far as sidewalk, infrastructure, and all of these things that are incomplete so far.
Okay, in general, generally speaking, the program has not finished its collections yet. And it's not set up to be the day you collect the last penny, all the buildings are built and all the roads are paved. That's not how this is envisioned. Projects are going to take several more years after the collections are finished to actually complete and come to fruition. That's with any SPOS program. So if that's a misconception you're speaking of, well, then that's a misconception. Now, on the county side, we are working to try to publicize and tell our story of what's been completed. I think internally, trying to get a project manager, program manager, whatever you want to call it, one of the key tasks would be to portray to the citizens where the money went. And it's being spent, it's out there, projects are being done. And I agree with you that it probably hasn't been conveyed the best. We are working to try to convey it in a better way so you can see where your money's being spent.
Well, that's true. From what I get from you, Jeff, is that you haven't finished the 2009 SPOS for the sidewalks and everything?
Yeah, there's still sidewalks to be built on the 2009 program. We're currently building some.
There's a lot of areas that haven't even touched with sidewalks. I have a lot of pictures of them.
I'll be happy to see them. Now, just in reference to sidewalks, if anyone's heard me speak before, we could have a whole SPOS program of sidewalks and we still won't meet the needs of this county. We are trying to look at prioritized routes around schools, around major corridors. We're starting to look at Terracotta Boulevard, the heaviest-traffic road in the county, to try to get sidewalks out there. Now, before this leadership under Chairman Turner came in, that was not a priority for the county. So, there is money still available to be spent on sidewalks, and it will be spent over the next several years for the '09 program. Transportation, transit, as much as we can put it in this list, it's in the list. Because by state law, you cannot use SPOS money to pay for operations. It only can go to capital. So we can buy buses, we can put in bus shelters. And there's money being proposed in the program to go towards transit on that nature. But in terms of paying the bus driver to operate the bus, SPOS money can't be spent on that. So as much as we can possibly set it up to have transportation in there, that's what's being proposed today.
But that's what I'm talking about. It seems like you would bring transportation into conversation. In other words, to say, okay, if I see, if I don't have a car, they're going to build a civic center, now I got a chance to go to that civic center. Because they're talking about having some transportation to the civic center, but there's nothing been mentioned about that.
You're right, Mr. Ware. And you're right to Mr. Tako's point. The civic centers have a mutually exclusive conversation. There are transportation and transit needs that are being addressed in the SPOS. What seems to be a hot topic or a hot button is the civic center. Civic center is just one of many projects that have been, that's been recommended when the board voted up and down that you have to be determined. But that's just one of many. Now, the question was asked about how could the civic center be used? In a lot of communities, civic center or civic arena is used as an economic development driver. Point in case, if you're looking at tiered concerts, you're looking at tiered performing art-type activities. Our kids in Clayton County right now drive out of the county to facilitate their graduations. Those are things that can now be left in our county as an opportunity to be facilitated at the civic arena opposed to going somewhere else to do that. Now, again, that very word may not be a plausible reason for the citizens to support it. But when it was put on the list as a recommendation from our economic development director, those are some of the thoughts that went into play to make the recommendation.
And one of the things that I have seen that I think the children could use, and they could be placed at international park, is a skate park. In other communities, they have skate parks who have kids who skateboard all around on the streets and things of that nature. If they had an area that they could go to where you can have an actual skate park and even have events held at the skate park, competitions and things of that nature, I think that would greatly improve the area for the, you know, for the children. But you don't have anything like that. I know they have one like that in Madison, Alabama. It was a joint private-public park. And they have great events, all kinds, your competitions and companies come in and sponsor those type of things for the young adults or children who are who are skating for it. So I think that would be a good, who would spend money inside one of our parks that we already have.
Yes ma'am, thank you for your comments.
There have been questions here about the nature of roadway improvements, widening, and sidewalks. Most of them with residual programs listed in progress from the 2004 SPOS initiative. Perhaps the webmasters might consider a strategy similar to that which was used in the description of transportation projects described in the 2009 SPOS. That kind of detail of projects that have been completed and projects that are currently in progress, I think would address some of the questions that can be posed and demonstrate, I think, the stewardship of the commissioners in these projects.
Yes, ma'am.
And while the 2004 discussion identifies a percentage of dollars allocated, if it had the same kind of detail that was present in the 2009 description, it would answer a number of the questions that have been posed here.
But right now, the list of projects, it's not finalized yet. I mean, these are just suggestions. If the board of commissioners choose to even go for it with the SPOS, they're the ones that decide on the final list of projects. At that point, the list would be the list for consideration. And more information, more detailed information, more educational information will be presented telling you more about the projects and how much they are, where the projects might be located. That will be coming if they decide to go on with the program. The kind, the purpose of these means is to garner some ideas. What do you like, what do you not like? We understand some of the information might be kind of short or shallow in a way. That's, we're not trying to skirt the issue, it's just we haven't got to that point in the process. When the board decides on a list of projects, much more detailed information will be out there for the citizens so you can decide. It's all about getting educated on it so you can make a decision where you want your money spent.
Mr. Pogba? Yes, my question is, has there been a pedestrian study, like a study of sidewalks in the county? Because I know people are talking about there are sidewalks, okay, we need sidewalks here. But has there been a comprehensive study, basically detailing, okay, these are the areas where we should focus to vote? These are areas where we don't need votes, etc. Has that study been conducted?
Yes, sir. The county has a transportation plan specifically for Clayton County. It was completed, off the top of my head, maybe three to four years ago. In there, it lists priority areas for consideration around schools, around the high-traffic areas. And at the time, we had a transit system, and of course, it listed transit routes.
How do we as citizens are going to feel that the commissioners are going to move forward and make a concrete decision whether or not they want transportation? Because the citizens wanted it before, but you had commissioners that did not want it and make the decision to not move forward with the local transportation that was here. So now you're telling me that they're going to look at it again? And there's a lot of, you know, people talk about transportation, but there's a whole cost factor that I don't think citizens understand for the maintenance and the operational costs. And the fees that you collect from the fare box do not support a transit system. It doesn't pay for itself. So what happens is that the operational costs are skyrocketing and you can't pay for itself. It does not, it doesn't pay. I work for transportation and I know it doesn't. You don't get the fees from the fare box. And FTA does not only give you a certain percentage of the cost from those, from the fare box fees that you.
Yes, ma'am. What you described is accurate. I think right now, the commitment is being shown by the board of commissioners, going, moving forward, talking to the FTA, finding out what it's going to take, taking their direction. We're on the cusp of hiring the company that is going to be here to satisfy the FTA. Now, you alluded to joining GRET, it's actually joining MARTA. And that's one of the options we're going to look at, is what does it mean for the county to operate a service and what's it mean to join MARTA? But all that's going to be on the table in the transit route.
But don't they have that information already when MARTA was already running the bus services here previously? Somehow, that information should already be available. Based on a study that had to be done when MARTA was operating and had the agreement with the county at that time. So now you're spending more money on another transit study to get what? To get what information is going to give you that you didn't have before?
Right. We can talk more about transit. This is something that the federal government is requiring us to do. So in order to get hands-on grants to go towards on the transit system, this is something we have to do. We are doing it as quickly as possible. But I'll be happy to talk to you on the side and show you where we are in the process and answer any questions I can.
Real quick, I want to add to the list if it's not already somewhere in '09 or '04. Police Prey City. I don't know what you mean by southwest, but I'd like to see it in the Point South area of Police Prey City. And also a senior center in the Point South area, Point South, Plent River.
Trail system and international park. It's possible, it's a very expensive trail system back there. However, it's not maintained. It's a really great asset, it could be something possible to rent it. Now, if we could put money to possibly. If we could put money to possibly fund the maintenance of that back area of those trails and helping to improve that, that would be awesome.
All right. I guess that's it as far as comments tonight. Again, we encourage you to please go to the ClaytonSPLOWS.com website. We will have some additional information regarding what we talked about tonight. We also heard the citizens loudly clear that you'll like to see handouts for future meetings so that you can have tableways along with what we provided. As well as, do know that the list that we have up to this point in time is a recommended list. It is not saying that's the direction that the board is heading in. There are some other decisions they may have to make regarding the SPLOWS projects and the list that we've already provided. But we encourage you to please go on the website. There's opportunity for you to interact and provide additional recommendations if you go to the website and there's something that you don't see or you don't necessarily agree with. So again, we appreciate your attention and have a good night.